Declare an open meeting.
No move.
Second, track second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Meeting is open. Open Meetings Act is posted on the door back there if anyone wishes to read that. Roll call Krista.
Here.
Yep.
Trent.
Here.
Tim.
Here.
Myself here. Okay, I'll turn it over to Dr. Earl and we will reorganize the board.
Good, accepting nominations for president of the board.
I nominate Mike Souza.
I'll second.
Okay, then first by Mrs. Hanks, second by Mr. Fromm.
Let me get word.
All in favor?
Aye.
All see. You can ask if there are any more nominations.
Okay.
I moved to cease nominations.
Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
Trent Tar moves to cease nominations, away from seconds. By default, and still, president of the Planned Public Schools Board of Education, Mr. Souza. Turn the meeting back over to you.
All right.
The only thing we didn't was hold you down to a twist.
Thanks for not doing that. Okay, now we've got to do vice president. Is there any nominations for vice president? Or do we have to write them down or do it verbally?
You can do the same exact thing.
What, Fromm?
Second.
Okay, any others? All right.
I'll make a motion that nomination ceases.
Second. Congratulations, Mr. Fromm, the vice president. By the way, I have to go home right now so.
Not feeling well.
Be a quick meeting.
Okay, now we need a secretary. All right, nominations for secretary.
Nominate Krista.
Second. Any others?
Nominations ceases.
Second. Congratulations, Krista.
Okay.
Okay, we will, just with the consent agenda, approve it, start off the last month's meeting minutes. Or the agenda first, I guess, sorry. I think we will move the number 11, discuss contract negotiations with superintendent, down to number 19, or between 19 and 20 there. We'll be going in closed session to finish up our evaluation and then talk about negotiations, so that way nobody has to stick around. And just let you know, we will be coming out of that closed session with details of the negotiated, our negotiations, if we come to an agreement, what they are, and we will not take action until next month, but we will, we will publicize the details.
Will you discuss next month at all then, or you discuss after coming out?
Yeah, next, there'll be a discussion time, yeah, during the actions, so whether anybody will discuss anything or not, I don't know, but yeah, it will be an action item.
Okay.
So if you want to stick around and get the details, you can, otherwise they'll be in the minutes.
Okay.
If you want to get them. Okay, I'll do the minutes, last month. That's all right with them, we'll move on to the financial reports.
I put a new financial report on everybody's page there, skimmed out where the date needed to be changed from 29th to 20th of 2020, so if you'll just throw out the other one that was in your packet and replace it with this one.
So you're writing out the 2020 on all checks?
I am, because I've read that on every Facebook post I've made out there, right?
This is, this is.
Are we getting close to getting another deposit from counties? Seems like our.
Today was the day.
Today.
Paying, yes, a little worried, because we got payroll this week, because we're paying Friday because of the holiday and Monday, yes, we got over $600,000 from Annalyn Pierce Co.
Okay, great.
I'm very happy, thank you.
Just because of the holidays screw up the timing of that, is that it?
Uh, no, not really, this is about right.
Is it about right?
About right, yeah.
Okay.
Well, it is a little bit, it's, it's pretty close, about 12th, 13th of the month is usually when it's a plus, though. Knox County always hits this roll early, like about the first week, but these guys are usually about the middle of the month, so.
Oh, okay.
And I usually don't pay this early, but I've paid 17 with, Mark was paying day, but it's been close on the days.
Does the general fund normally run kind of low this time of year?
Yes, 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 this is very common, so.
They used to pay your land taxes or something.
Yeah, pay your land taxes.
Throw a stone into glass house.
I knew the craters would just. Okay, then I'll do the claims. Is that right? Are those the teacher logos? Are you out of space yet, or?
I'm out of space.
On the walls?
I'm sure I understand the question.
I didn't know we were going to put logos up and banners and.
We thought we would personalize the classroom doors over here like we have in the elementary. Validates our teachers a little bit, I think it dresses up the doors, kind of an accent.
Oh, sorry, we went 40 to 17, throwing you.
Excellent.
Sorry. That's exciting.
And is this that cost, include that door?
The weight room door.
Yeah.
Yeah, over break, I sent you a picture of that.
Yeah, okay, that's how it fits.
Yeah.
So, the train contract, we're kind of figuring what went back and forth a little bit. Oh, you got that out.
Water bottle. It's a water bottle.
It's an expensive water bottle.
It started out around, what, $12,000?
Yeah.
Or something, or so.
Yeah, for two years.
$12,000, $12,000 was two years?
No, $12,000 was two years, this is a one-year contract.
The $4,000 is for the whole year.
Yeah.
So you got it down, so.
Yeah, so that's, that was about what we're paying for, paying Rasmussen for this, so equipment over there, obviously, much more dependent, service contracts going to be slightly higher, but at any rate, that's probably about what we can expect on an annual service contract for the elementary.
So that's what we were paying train for the elementary or everything, just for?
For the elementary.
So it really didn't change.
Train doesn't do anything on this side of the street.
And they don't do anything over there anymore.
And Rasmussen doesn't do anything over there, no.
Well, it's worth, worth asking for, complaining about price, just for sure. Okay, if there's no more conversation on that, I will ask for a motion to.
I'll make the motion that we accept the consent agenda, except for the change to the agenda part of it, move number 11 down to between 19 and 20.
Second.
You'll second it down.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed nay. Motion carries. Okay, you're here to speak?
Yes.
Okay. Clearing out the portion of our agenda set aside for public comment, each person wishing to address the board will be recognized by the board president. Also, each person wishing to address the board will be allowed only one opportunity to do so this evening. We request that you leave your comments to five minutes or less, and we will advise you when that five-minute time period is elapsed. Please remember, this is a public meeting for the conduct of the business of the Planted Public School District. Offensive language, personal attacks, and hostile conduct will not be tolerated. You should be further advised that there is no legal protection for any comments that are made. Now, that isn't just directed at you because you're the only one here, it goes to everybody. We didn't, we didn't put this together just for you.
Very good.
So, do you like to speak?
The main reason, I guess, I'm here, and I'm a little out of my element, because my wife was supposed to be here as part of the prom committee, she got sick on the way home from basketball game tonight, and so I'm speaking on her and my behalf, but not sure if all of you or any of you know that we've been planning prom since, I don't know, August of last year, before that, but as far as we've known, since August, we've been on the calendar for March 28th, so we've made all of our entertainment, DJs, lined up everything for March 28th. And somewhere in passing and conversation, it was said that, no, it's the 5th of April. And the way this all went down, I think, was, was not very tactful, to say the least. What we were told was that it was always planned for April 5th, and that it was never planned for March 28th, and that it was going to be a conflict with community theater. And so we got to scrambling, the wife and whoever else was on this committee, to see if we could change the entertainment, or get our money back, or what we could do. Well, if we changed the date, we couldn't get our money back, so we were kind of at a dilemma there, and. So we decided, I guess, ultimately, upon approval, then we're going to move it to the 25th, I believe, of April. And mostly because, from what I was told, Dr. Earl was not willing to change it, it was always the 5th, and that's what we were going to stay with. Like I said, I, some of this information is secondhand to me, but I think I'm right on this, I can't look at anybody else to correct me, but, so I guess upon approval we're having at the 25th, what I guess astonishes me a little bit is when it was asked, well, if we couldn't get our money back, was the school going to give us, or help us out, or give us some of that back? And absolutely not. If anything, we, we owed the school because we'd been using the school as a fund, for fundraising activities, or what have you. And I think that's appalling, I just think that's appalling. I mean, we, there's many organizations that use the school, we're all taxpayers, I just think that's crazy that that kind of statement would be made, but, so I guess I'm not sure if I'm asking for permission or what, but I believe that the new date is the 25th of April.
How much money are you out?
Sorry?
How much money are you out?
I, I don't have those numbers in front of me, like I said, I, I think if we kept the date, or if we moved the date to what it was proposed, I think we were out the DJ, I think we were out the entertainment, and I think we were out all of the deposit, and I think that was 500 or 750, I'm not sure.
More than 500.
Oh, for sure, for sure.
And are those, are those work with the new date, the 25th?
I think the 25th will work for most of the people.
But I mean, the, the money part, that you're talking, that you're out.
I think we can keep that, these same people have been very good to work with as far as the next weekend, which was, I believe, the 5th, that it was supposedly originally always planned for, would not work for them. So if we were to keep the 5th of April, like they wanted us to change it to, we would have been out the money. We would have been out the deposit, we would have been out the entertainment, we would have had to start from scratch. But if we move it back basically a month, the 25th of April, I think, I think we can keep all that stuff. However, after hindsight, like I said, I think there was a lot of decisions made quick because we wanted to make sure and get on a schedule to make sure we could keep that, our money, that everybody had worked so hard for, fundraising and what have you, so we had to make some quick decisions there. The community theater, they, they, they would have moved, they, they weren't going to have a problem with that, from what we talked to them a little bit, they said, hey, if we need to move, so be it. So I don't know why there was such a discrepancy on why that, I, I don't know, I, I don't know what the deal is there.
So did you guys already switch it then, with your vendors?
I believe it's the 25th, I didn't get set in stone that, I don't know, Timmy might know if Patsy was on.
I think that's what you're saying is right, that they were able to move it to the 25th, and the entertainment and the DJ would still be.
Stays the same. The DJ, I'm not sure, I'm not sure on the DJ, the entertainment, and that, I think, is good.
Yeah, I know the entertainment is, I can't remember what my wife told me about.
Yeah, I, I hear all this stuff, and I, I wasn't actually sitting right there at that committee meeting.
Well, the main thing was still is working out for the kids, that's what's worse than kids.
That's right, but.
The date's going to work.
Yeah, I guess the, the main reason I'm here and that I'm upset is the way it was proposed, that, no, it was always that weekend, and then we were told, well, we got two sets of calendars, and it was a misrepresentation of calendars. And I just think that's crazy, if you got two calendars, the only one that the, that the parents and the public see is the school calendar, so I don't know, you know, how we would know any different, if there was a different date, we wouldn't know that, we only see the one that's public.
Are you saying the public one was originally slated for March?
28.
March 28?
Yep.
Did that get changed then, or?
Yes, twice now.
When did that get changed?
I think just last week, we changed it to the 5th, and then I think the day after we changed it to the.
The school's calendar, or?
You and me to address this.
You're asked if you would please.
Okay. The school calendar is also the principal's calendar, it's managed by the principal. Okay, so when I was approached by a post-prom parent, sent a text to myself and Mr. Schmidt a week ago, to ask if prom could be moved from the 28th of March to a different date, preferably the 25th of April. So I, I thought the 28th of March doesn't sound right to me, so I looked on my calendar, and I have it as April 4th. But understanding that indeed, the principal's calendar, the school calendar on our website, is the one that's viewable to the public, I looked on there, and it was the 28th. So I immediately went back to my email archives with the post, the prom sponsors from last year, not the post-prom, the prom sponsors from last year, and found that I had a discussion with prom sponsor for last year about prom date for this year. And in that discussion, I had sent an email that said, the 28th of March doesn't work. We have band, carney, and we have community theater, the 28th of March doesn't work. Okay, so I said that to the prom sponsor last year. How it got on the principal's calendar is the 28th, I don't know, and so I, I don't like to pass the buck, I don't manage that calendar, okay, but the 28th got put on the calendar. April 4th is what I put on my calendar, I can't find, admittedly, I can't find an email where I told the prom sponsor or the principal last year that prom is April 4th, that's the best date. Tried to avoid that because state FFA is the first, second, third, and so, just so, you know, that group doesn't miss out on prom prep. But with Easter and alumni volleyball, basketball, and, and getting kind of late towards graduation, that was the date I put on my calendar. How the 28th got put on the school calendar, I don't know. I don't look at the school calendar every day, usually in our communication and our administrative meetings, we sync those, okay? Admittedly, there was some dysfunction last spring. Okay, so whether that's the result of the principal putting one date on the calendar and me having a different date, I don't know. Okay, so thankfully, a senior parent asked the question, can we move the date from the 28th of March? Well, it's not the 28th of March, you know, can we move it? I was a little apprehensive to move it, but when we looked at the 25th of April as the only other option, and then having been told that indeed, the entertainment has that date available, visited with Mr. Souza, visited with Mr. Schmidt, so I shared with our prom sponsors, Mrs. Darnell and Mrs. Whacker, if this works for you, if April 25th works for you, then we're open to movement, but it has to work for our prom sponsors, because if one or both of them is busy that weekend, then, then we can't. Okay, whether they went to a post-prom meeting then, I think Sunday night, or whenever that was, but I told them on Friday, if this works for our, our prom sponsors, and if our junior senior parents want to move it to the 25th, we're open. I received word from Mrs. Darnell the next morning, we're all good with the 25th. Okay, so seems to be a pretty, a pretty good solution. Okay, I never made a comment, post-prom posed the school, never made such a comment, so who would attribute that to me, I don't know, I never made such a comment. Never had, you know, serious conversation with anybody, never got ahead of ourselves to the point of, you know, paying back for, you know, lost funds or whatever, so, so those would be things that somebody would, would just, I, I don't know where those would come from, okay, but at any rate, the whole thing started with post-prom parents wanting to move the date of prom. I didn't move the date of prom. We allowed the post-prom parents and our prom sponsors to move the date of prom. Okay, so, and then also, you know, recognizing that, you know, that the day after prom this next year, we'll look at next year's calendar, sponsors, myself, Mr. Schmidt, and, and we'll put that on the principal's calendar, the superintendent's calendar, and make sure we push that out consistently, you know, to folks that.
Yeah, I think it's important that you get that date right, because there is a lot of planning that goes into that. I don't know when they started, Steve, did they start six months ago, or?
Oh, I'm sure.
I mean, it's been going on for a while, and when they're planning on that date, whether or not it was or wasn't.
Yeah, well, I absolutely understand that, because there are, you know, dozens and dozens of schools that are booking, you know, generally entertainment and certainly other things, post-prom folks generally entertainment, music and catering and everything else, you know, so, you know, understand, so I anticipate that, you know, we won't have that issue in the future. So we just had a human error.
I'm glad, I'm glad it worked out, and you get another month to prepare, you know, but I just.
So that, and which is the bottom line, worked out fine, from what I understand, post-prom parents got what they asked for, moved the date off the 28th.
I don't remember anybody asking to move it.
Yeah.
From the 28th to the 25th.
Yes, a parent did. That's what's, that's what started this.
One parent wanted to move it.
A ju, a senior parent.
One parent asked for it.
Senior, well, that's what.
I don't know whether she was rep.
That's what started.
Representing other people, or.
That, that's what started the, oh, we had a discrepancy in the date, so I was glad that, I got that text.
I don't think anybody requested that I'm aware of to move it until we found out that there was a discrepancy in the date.
That's not accurate, okay? I was asked by a senior parent if we can move it from the 28th, and to, and then gave a couple variety of other options, and that's when I said, uh, the, the 4th is what is on the calendar. Well, I'm not sure that our entertainment's available on the 4th, but they are available on the 25th of April. And then after a few more discussions, the 25th of April does work, we're, we're open to that, if our sponsors are open to that, then that's fine, and so I believe that's a conversation that was had on Sunday night with junior senior parents, whether Mrs. Whacker and Mrs. Darnell attended that, I don't know.
I have to back that, Steve, because I talked to a few other parents too, and got that same.
That what?
Feedback from them that they would have preferred a different date.
But they what?
That they would have preferred a different date.
Really?
Yes. So, I have to back Dr. Earl, because I talked to some people personally when I was investigating this thing myself and trying to figure it out, so, so, yeah.
Does the committee still lose their deposits, moving the date or do you?
I think if we keep the date, I think we're going to keep our deposit, I think we're going to keep the same entertainment, the 25th, I believe, was the only other date that would work, but it sticks in my mind that the, that the DJ, it just sticks in my mind that that wasn't going to work for the DJ, but I could be wrong on that, I, I just don't remember.
Okay, all right, we're going to wrap this up, and again, I'm just glad for the kids, it works out, and the money part of it too, but just glad it, it worked out for probably the best second choice possible.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thanks, Steve. Okay, discussion items, review of board policies, series 409, 410, 411.
Okay, this is, there's a specific reason tonight why it's a good idea to go through your board policies routinely, it takes several, you know, probably three years to get through the whole book, and then you come back around to it again. 40901 kind of probably needs to be rewritten, and that would take the committee of teachers as well, in fact, I think there's reference to a committee in here that doesn't exist. But the first thing on 40901, you know, there's a misspelled word in that first paragraph, and so that would need.
Can I ask a question quick?
Yeah.
Is some of the state statute, or is this all just our own?
Yes, yes. It, it is required by state statute, here it is actually, 79830, every six years, permanent employees, permit certificate employees shall get evidence of professional growth, okay, so all school, all public school districts have to require, they have to provide professional growth. Now, every school district throughout, through their own professional development calendar, so for example, us having those early Wednesdays, that pretty much meets the requirement, the threshold's very low of professional development requirements, okay, but the only thing in statute that says specifically, here's, here's what, here's what would be sufficient, so six semester hours of college credit shall be acceptable evidence of professional growth. So if a teacher earns six hours of college credit in a span of, in a window of six years, because you have six years to earn enough points in, in some type of arbitrary chart that you determine with your teachers, but the statute gives you an example, if you earn six hours of college credit, you're good for six years. Practically, all our teachers, certainly left of a master's, are earning six hours in a year, let alone six. Okay, so it's a, it's a low threshold, but once a teacher might get to a master's and get beyond, they, you know, admittedly, they, they, you know, if they're not taking college credit, how do they earn their professional development credits? Well, attended an ESU workshop, you know, ESU credit, your own scheduled professional development, so if they are present here on a, on a first Wednesday, they get credit towards professional development, so it's not something they have to do outside of school. Okay, so it's, you know, it, like I said, it's a, it's a simple thing, it can be kind of a, a bit of a paperwork mess, teachers turning in forms and getting approval and keeping track of half points and one points over the course of a six-year period, it starts when you reach tenure, you go six years, and then you get another six-year cycle and another six-year cycle, and so you have teachers all over when their cycles are. But you determine with your committee, which is the Professional Rights and Responsibilities Committee, we don't have that committee, the teachers don't have that committee, you determine what your schedule is. So here you have 21, no, 23 examples listed in policy, right? So some of those you'd be familiar with, some of them you'd be like, well, what exactly is this? And I would concur with you, some of them just really are really not incredibly applicable. Okay, so this is probably a policy which, with discussion with the teachers, should probably be determined, how are we going to determine professional development points? It's, it's something that schools don't really do a great job necessarily keeping track of, because they're like, you know, if, if a teacher is here every day, over the course of six years, just in their, our own scheduled professional development, they're going to earn their credit. But it's policy nonetheless because it's statute, it's based on statute, so we will work on that, that's what I'm telling you.
How many of these, 23, do you think have been used over the last 10 or 15 years? Of them even?
Well, I guess, so a Nebraska Department of Education Advisory Committee, had, have we ever had a teacher be on Nebraska Department of Education Advisory Committee, for example? I mean, so this was, you know, this policy comes from NASB and has all these examples for us, we can determine ourselves, obviously, but they're, out of 23 here, Mike, realistically, there's probably only five that would apply, would be realistic that, that teachers would earn professional development credit.
And so would get different, more points for, I mean, it's going to be worth more points.
For different things, yes.
Where's the chart?
So a Wednesday, there, the chart is, I would have to go to a teacher's file to pull out an old chart.
Oh, it just, it's, you attached her, I didn't know if it was in the back or something.
Yeah, you just, the, the form and the chart, a chart would just be a spreadsheet that the principal would keep, or that the superintendent would keep, or the teacher, the cycle they're on from here to here, and then it would list their professional development over six years and how much those points were. So a, a, a Wednesday PB would not be worth, obviously, as much as a. So a Wednesday, there, the chart is, uh, I would have to go to a teacher's file to pull out an old chart.
Oh, it just, it's, you attached her, I didn't know if it was in the back or something.
Yeah. You just, the, the form and the chart, a chart would just be a spreadsheet that the principal would keep, or that the superintendent would keep, or the teacher, the cycle they're on from here to here, uh, and then it would list their professional development over six years and how much those points were. Um, so, uh, a, a, a Wednesday PB would not be worth, obviously, as much as three hours of graduate credit. You know? So, um, so that's something we need to work on with teachers, uh, something kind of, and, and you don't necessarily have to work on it with teachers, that shows here, you know, you know, Professional Rights and Responsibilities Committee. As far as I know, that could be a board committee. I'm, I'm not sure.
But we wanna make sure we have things on there that teachers are willing to.
Yes. That's why it's good to work to build it with teachers, and have them agree, yeah, this would be perf, this would be a professional development activity. And there wouldn't be anything that would probably be gray where administrators say, that's not professional development. Teachers say, yeah, we think it is, so.
Might be based more on how many points you're gonna be able to.
Yes, exactly right. We think that's worth two points. Well, I don't know, going to ESU for an afternoon for a MTSS is maybe only where, so, uh, there can be some arbitrary, you know, thinking about that. So again, you have six years to show evidence of professional growth. Practically every teacher would meet that standard pretty easy from this statute. So we need to work on that.
So do we wanna revise this, or just skip it for now and?
I would recommend, I guess, just leaving it, and, uh, it, it, it will take more than a month to put it together honestly, uh, but we need to.
But there's no deadlines or?
No. But we need to work on that.
So what, you want a former committee, or what does?
I'm gonna, I'll probably talk with, uh, we'll talk with the teachers and see, yeah, see what they wanna do and, uh, but I would think that Mr. Schmidt, Mrs. Thompson, who are leaders of professional development, uh, could easily meet with teachers, could streamline this, could make this a lot simpler. Uh, and then basically, it's just that it's a paperwork for administration. Uh, we could have an easy Google, digital Google form for teachers to fill out, so, but then we've got a paper trail, so.
If somebody on the board wanted to be a part of it, I guess, definitely would be open to that. I don't know how much input we could put into it.
We've got a committee, a, a Teaching and Learning Committee, which would fit that area, so, um, so we'll work on it.
And we have a policy committee, Tim, Mrs. is changing policy.
Yeah. Um, four oh nine oh two, the one then, uh, just next, the third paragraph down, I think that NASB, uh, you know, we, uh, out of their, their proofreader, I think, they need to know. So the third paragraph down, if you, if you read this with me, see if, if you're seeing the same thing I am. The building principal shall have sole discretion to allow or disallow certificated employees to attend or participate in the requested event. When making this determination, the superintendent will consider the value of the program.
Are they called principals, superintendents?
They shouldn't be. So, um, anytime there's language that mentions sole discretion, that should go to the superintendent. Now, I don't, I think sole discretion is kind of, is not necessarily, necessary language, though. I think if you just said administrative team. Shall have sole discretion. So we work together on whether we're going to, whether we think, uh, professional development activity, and we haven't run into this yet, where a teacher is requested to attend some professional development, and we determine, we being the administrative team, um, does this align with our professional development goals? Um, are we, is, is this, uh, part of the mission of the building?
Well, there's also a part about whether they can be gone, if they need to be here at that time, or whether you can get, get along without them, which would go back probably to the principal's, or so, I mean, you'd have to ask them anyway. You know, it's about right if they're gone.
You can read this in two different, given two different instructions, and it's verifying in the last sentence with the judgment of the superintendent. Building principal shall have sole discretion to allow, disallow certified employees to attend or participate in requested event, period. When making this determination, the superintendent will consider the value of the program, whole different category, whole different subject, and is re-verified in the last sentence of the superintendent. So I think it's correct. The way I read it.
I agree with Thor, because it says that, the principal says if they can go or not, and then you decide if it's a, if the class is worthwhile.
So on, on the language one, it says, when making this determination, the superintendent is making a determination. Am I determining whether I agree with the?
Principal?
Or whether I agree with the teacher attending them?
The principal is determining who's going to attend.
Whether they can attend.
You, you are determining the value of the program and the certificate of the employee. And, well, I read it as two different topics, and then to verify that, it's re-verified in the last sentence, the judgment of the superintendent.
I mean, I don't think it's a serious issue. It just, as I was reading through that, it, it struck me as, um, you know, the principals have sole discretion to make this determination. Well, what if I disagree?
Of who's going, but you're, you're evaluating the program, the way I read it.
So, I mean, this isn't gonna hang us up, I don't think. I just didn't know whether you need, that you thought that may need to be cleaned up, but as you're reading and interpreting, it matters not to me, the policy is yours.
I would just. The way you both are stuck, the way I read it.
Okay? I mean, it, the, the, yeah, I mean, again, it's not gonna, we're gonna get caught in the conundrum, I don't think, with this language. Those are the only recommendations for, uh, anything to consider.
I had a question about the jury duty.
Yeah.
So it says you have to report within an hour?
Yeah, that's interesting.
If you're on jury duty in Omaha, you ain't gonna make it back in an hour.
Yeah. Are you, so if you're called a federal jury duty?
It's still jury duty.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, if you got out there at nine AM.
That would keep you away. I don't know where they came up with that. I, that caught my attention too.
Yeah, that's probably state statute. I don't think we can change it anymore.
Well, it's, it's derived from state statute. There's no doubt about it. Um, and it's referenced there. So, again, it's not gonna hang us up, but, um, and I don't even know why it's even necessary to say.
It could have been worded better, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Well, maybe you can look into it and see if we can make any adjustments, or not.
If you just say, well, yeah, um, I guess that, that's what I'll do. I'll look at that statute and see if one hour is listed in there. I can't imagine that it is. Um, but I will look that up and advise you for that next month. So if you, yeah, and then if you had nothing else, uh, uh, you're not making any changes to any policy tonight, so it requires no action.
Right.
What? Okay, I just have a question. The substitute teachers pay per?
Yeah.
What is a current substitute teacher, they teach for one day?
One day is a hundred and, a hundred and five. Well, and that, Krista, that brings up a good question. When we get into, um, those things later this spring to determine substitute pay for next year, we need to articulate clearly, um, substitute pay and long-term pay. Long-term pay is, you know, most school districts around here are anywhere from a hundred and five. We're low, uh, a hundred and five to a hundred and thirty. It's the long-term subpay. When does it kick in? At what day? When you teach X amount of days for the same teacher, your substitute pay generally changes and from district to district, it goes up an extra twenty bucks, or it doubles as much as doubles, and justifiably so. If you're a long-term sub, you're doing more than putting in a video for kids to watch or, or giving a task or having to do worksheets. If you're a long-term sub, you're managing, you're teaching, you're managing classroom, you're teaching, you may be grading, you might be planning, um, but, so when would that kick in? So that's, that's something we need to, we need to clarify.
You know, the, the thing about, okay, you get a substitute teacher staying here for three weeks, and she comes in for a week and a half and has to be gone for two or three days, so you bring a difference, does that break her long-term cycle, or does it?
Yeah, usually it's, it's always classified consecutive days, X amount of consecutive days. So if that, and under those circumstances, you would start over. You know, if you reach the thresh, threshold and your pay bumped up, and then you need three days off when you come back to finish that long-term, you'd, you'd start again until you got to that. Arguably, probably.
So school can get around that by saying, we need you for one day sort of long-term, and then we need you.
Yeah, I don't wanna trick people that way, but.
Uh, so it doesn't matter if like, if you have a master's degree, you're coming in as a?
Correct. Pay, the pay's the pay.
Okay, and it's a hundred and five.
Yeah, and that would be consistent from district to district. I've never seen a, no district that had two different levels of subpay, depending upon experience here.
Yeah, okay. Okay, that answers questions six.
So when do we look at the price that we pay for subs? Is that the?
Well, that would be about an April meeting, I would suppose, I mean, I.
But it's all kind of by itself. It's not with negotiations.
It should, it could go with classified wages, when that's determined. That'd be probably the way I'd use it, which is usually happening by April, April and May are the latest.
Okay, we're gonna move number eleven down, so we're done with discussion items for now, move on to action items. Twelve, discuss and take possible action on board of education committee assignments appointed by the president. I have a copy of that, but I have no changes that I think need to happen, but if somebody here would just love to be on a different committee, they're not on, speak up. But if you don't like committees, you're on top. This has got a really good reason.
That's the boss.
Yeah.
Just not letting go of that, not even that president, I guess.
The only thing I was gonna say is I added these up, and Krista is on six. So a couple of us on five and three on four, so if you wanna get out of one, we will assign it to one, three, and four.
As you guys all know, though, too, we don't work you too hard on the committee. Building the grounds, negotiations, your two things, you know, Americanism is the only one.
That's a pretty, that takes a lot of time.
It's intense.
I mean, I don't know what they do it. Look, I don't know.
You're just gonna have to take over.
I just got thrown in there, because I used to do that for.
Okay. Okay, so everybody's all right with where they're at?
Yeah. So you need an action, or you'll need a, a motion.
I move, is there, you gotta do it, or who's that?
No, go ahead.
I move to keep the committees as is.
Second?
Yeah.
First and second, myself, yes.
You know what? Yes.
Try it.
Yes, Trent.
Yes.
Krista.
Yes.
Yeah, so I, yeah, I just recognize it, and give you the cheap language for your motion, so, sorry.
Oh. Yep, now it's the second.
Yep. Well, let me check Robert's rules. Might not be in there.
It was the official motion anyway.
Okay, number thirteen, discuss and take possible action on appointing Dr. Darren Harald as the district's non-discrimination compliance coordinator.
Don't know anything about it, just know that it's mandated by statute.
You've never had to do anything?
Nope.
Sounds like a good job for you.
Mm-hmm.
What's it pay?
We're gonna determine that later.
He pays us about six thousand.
We're gonna determine that.
Let him do it.
Thing that scares me is, are you supposed to be doing something?
That's if there would be.
A complaint?
I think a motion that we, uh, action on appointing Dr. Darren Harald as the district's non-discrimination compliance coordinator.
Second.
Yes, the first and second, Thor?
Yes.
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 Fourteen, discuss and take possible action on accepting the resignation of Andrew Miller at the end of the contract year.
Nope.
What do we understand, whole issues?
Yep. Tried to find him a house here last summer. But they picked Newman Grove because her new husband coaches, and so he has later hours, and so, uh, that was just the decision. I knew then that this was probably not gonna be a sustainable set of circumstances, and then sure enough, you know, the same school where her husband is sold, that's, that's the way it is.
Really good for her.
Yep.
Any leads on?
Nope. Well, Schmidt?
Not yet.
We'll start pursuing that a little more aggressively tomorrow morning.
I'd just like to make a motion on that.
I'll move that, accept the resignation of Andrew Miller's contract year.
Second.
Trent?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
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 So, Chris.
Yes.
Number fifteen, discuss and take possible action on approving proposal for nineteen new wireless access points for the elementary in the amount of five thousand eight hundred sixty-nine dollars, comma, forty-eight. I don't know what that is, actually. You got a comma and?
That'd be five hundred dollars. Slide that in there. See the difference between a comma and a period?
That's Ukrainian math.
Thousand eight hundred sixty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents.
Of course, you have a proposal there, uh, uh, just gave it to Mr. Sauer. They're due, it's time, anyway.
Eight years old. I mean, that's what they're going on, that's, that's pretty good.
So?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
The increased bandwidth you're gonna get on is new ones, so, you know, it'll be.
Well, I understand, these are like the best of the best, so.
Well.
The ones that were, I mean, they're, they're really good.
I think that, you know, there's some things you get what you pay for, you know, your wireless connectivity, and what is the work really you're doing?
But as many wireless devices as you're supporting, I mean, I'm surprised you did this long.
And just with, with, you know, Tom's explanation there, as you guys are sure have recognized with Mrs. Thompson and Mr. Schmidt, I mean, we're, we're definitely trying to amp up the amount of technology, technology use, bandwidth, necessary to do that.
Well, the main thing, they're not gonna work next year anyway, right? The ones we have?
So they just won't be supported.
Yeah, so, kind of a no-brainer.
Yep.
Good. What's the motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, proposal for nineteen new wireless access points, because I mentioned for the amount of five thousand eight hundred sixty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents.
I'll second. Krista?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Serious. Report, selectivity directors report.
As usual, scheduled that Mr. Lee provides, um, you see the little paragraph he has about the junior high football, I mean, he, uh, is a little bit of a dilemma, you know, right now, and, um, so he's getting a little anxious about scheduling certain games, 'cause he feels, you know, a couple of the games that he played last year were Creighton's games, and so he's like, you know, Dr. Earl, should I, should I contract for these games, you know, 'cause they were Creighton's games, and if I do, and they have their own team, you know, and they're gonna expect that, because it ends the dates, you know, 'cause we might have had them, a couple of them had on the Creighton day, that's when we played this team that was on Creighton's schedule, and so, so he's just being conscientious, uh, but, but wanting to lock down the junior high football schedule. So I told him, I said, you know, might be another month, here's where it is, you know, visiting with Mr. Sauer, I think he shared with you, um, where that is. So that's, you know, just something that he wanted you to be aware of from his perspective, uh, that it is something that is, will be necessary. It'll be hard to schedule in summer, you know what I'm saying?
I was gonna, go ahead.
If Creighton has their own team, obviously we'll probably schedule a game event.
I think we'd be able to find that one, yeah, that way. So I think we have, do we have three locked in for sure, for sure, or four?
I think we have four.
So, so, I mean, we're, four is still not enough. So, so, I mean, we're, four is still not enough, we like the six-game schedule. So if we've got four locked in, and if Creighton goes on their own, we think that would be five, and that would be doable, but then we, you know, if we really wanted six, you know, we may have to look a little beyond our borders than what we've been used to, but, I mean, it, it could be done, but, but he's, he's one individual that's kind of left out there as this decision kind of lingers and lures.
I kinda, I guess I sent him a text today too, with, before I realized Creighton was, had it on their agenda, I'd asked him if we waited two weeks after this meeting, he'd have time to have a meeting tonight and contact us, you know, if they talked about it, then talk to, give them a week or two to contact us, if they don't contact us in a week or two, we're done, you know, just go, go ahead and schedule teams. Then I saw that it's on, on their agenda, so again, I'm thinking if they don't contact us within two weeks of their meeting, they aren't very interested in doing any of this.
True.
So I, my opinion is, if we don't hear anything from them in the next two weeks, let's just consider we're on our own. You know, and then let Rob and go ahead and do it, I don't know how you guys feel about that. I mean, we don't have to vote on it, we're not making any changes.
No.
Unless we do something with them, then we have to. But if we don't do anything with them, we don't have to take action, right?
Correct.
So, so that's my opinion.
They're meeting in a row?
Yeah, we've talked about it, yeah, they're first.
Four, four.
And we've definitely given, given up, tell you for something happened, so, and I, and I have, and I have contacted their board members to talk to them about it also, so...
Okay, what did they say, anything?
They just says we never talked, we've never had it on our agenda, we've never talked about it, so...
Ain't gonna worry about it, wait a week.
Okay, next is principal's report.
Put on their honor roll stuff, so junior high students, we had thirty-three that made the honor roll or high honor roll from first semester to high school, we had fifty-nine students that were in the same category. Mrs. Thompson and I went to the Nebraska State Principals Conference in December, a lot of great speakers down there, the keynote talked about relating to kids nowadays, and really how you speak their language, get them intrigued in what you're teaching them, and had a great message for us. Also picked up a lot of great materials for our school improvement process that we're going through right now, so lots more resources and networking that we did there to help build that. The robotics, we wanna start a robotics, whether we start a team or we start adding it into our junior high program as an explorer. Mr. Juden did a lot of work, he wrote a grant for Perkins, also the Cooper Foundation, we got both of those, so Perkins paid for the robotics that we have, right now we have two robots and kits to fix them and all that stuff. We're taking the Cooper Foundation right now and he's starting to build the ground that we're gonna be working with, so they have a designated area they have to work in, cones, they have to pick up all this, so he's kind of just building a little robotics area with the money that we have, all grants, so really happy that we've got both those and it's gonna be a good thing for our kids here, here this next year.
Where are these robots, I mean, are they like woodworking robot, or they just...
Um, no, they're, they're metal, and they have, the kids have to program them, so really like the competitions, it's called VEX, is what they're called.
Yeah, I've seen it downstate.
Yeah, and so then, you know, they have certain competitions that they have a year to prepare for, they go to different ones, they compete and then change how they code their robot, so I think it'd really catch quite a few of our kids by having that, getting them involved in there, and Mr. Juden is very ambitious about it, and I know it's something he's really intrigued in, so by all means, I pulled him to run with it, we'll write some grants, and we were lucky enough to get him, so...
Does he have class time to do this or is this after-school stuff?
It'll be after-school stuff right now, I know he's starting to put, I think he was gonna put a little bit into the junior high explorer class, because right now they have kind of a shop class, so he was gonna put a little bit of that into it as well, so that way they kind of get exposed to it and get them used to it, and that's what we're kind of looking at next year in the schedule too, if we could somehow maybe get a freshman IT class that they have to take, so that way they can get exposed to it. So that's what we're looking at, maybe offer an elective with it too. So that's where we're at with that one. Two schools, one book, that's at the elementary, twenty-three books, we're taking the Zion for the families, and then all of our elementary families received the book, we're, I think tonight's chapter five, hopefully Harper's got that written by the time we get there. But they have competitions, questions, things like that going on, so really cool thing they're doing, pennies for patience is this week, chucking in bucket, that's going on Friday, I believe, at three forty-five.
Pickup time, yeah.
Yep, pickup time, so that'll be good.
Can you explain what pennies for patience, what patience?
This is our, is it military or just cancer patients?
Cancer, okay.
So there you go, that's how much I've asked this Thompson about it. Our last PD that we had, we did CPR training for our first response team, and we finished the asthma training, so everybody on our first response teams in both buildings have been trained in CPR and asthma, or anaphylactics. And then we did purchase twenty Chromebooks at the beginning of the week, Tom set that in, that we're going to hand out to our juniors, so right now our seniors have MacBooks, our juniors will get those when they come in. We looked at it as, we're comparing how the two work, if they, if we can get the same thing out of the Chromebooks that we are out of the MacBooks, then whether we choose to go one-to-one or not, if, because you guys have the ultimate decision, we have to upgrade our technology at some point anyways, we have a bunch of MacBooks that are eight years old and we need to upgrade them, so if the, if the Chromebooks are going to meet our needs, we're just trying to give you guys another option of where we can purchase some different form of technology. A MacBook that we ordered, I believe, was two hundred and fifty bucks versus a MacBook that's gonna run you anywhere from a thousand to twelve. So we're trying to get some options, see how compatible they are, see the longevity of it, that way we can give you guys better feedback, so we'll know better in May, how to answer some questions I know you guys will have. But as for that, that has been about the last month, preschool para, para-professional position, I was gonna let you take that because you know more about it than I do.
Well, Crystal Hoffman has been our preschool para dynamite the past couple of years, she's been working on her teaching strategy, she's student teaching with us right now, and let's see, Carney made an exception to allow her to student teach in the school where her children are, so we kind of arranged that, so otherwise, you know, we were gonna worry about how this was, how we were gonna manage that. So we lost our para, so we advertised and had a couple of, Mrs. Thompson had a couple of interviews in December, we thought we had one locked down, over Christmas break, this gal kind of disappeared that we wanted, so Mrs. Thompson interviewed another gal, contacted us, was very interested, we offered her the job, she didn't like the wage, and so we lost her. And then Trinity Sauer, graduated from a few years ago, working on early childhood endorsement, not a certificate, not a certificate, in Northeast Community College, who just happens to have an all-online semester this year, she, she will be done with her associate's degree in December, but she thinks she can take the rest of the courses all online, so we were able to hire her to be a preschool para, she starts Monday, so we feel pretty good about that. That's what, when Trinity was senior in high school, she wants to work to be in early education, whether it's in daycare, childcare, or schools, and so, awesome to get, have her have that opportunity here at our school, so...
She always wanted to come back here anyway, I think.
Yeah, I don't think she ever left, blame you, so that's again, yeah, so anyway, that, that, we were pretty nervous there for a couple-week window here over Christmas break, what we were gonna do to have support in the classroom because you have, we have to have it. So, we're good to go.
How many people on that first response team?
We have, I believe, six in this building and then five in the elementary.
Twelve.
Is what it is.
So is your order every floor then, over there?
Here, yes, except for top floor, Mrs. Moosel's up there by herself, but I think Mr. Boyer's on, has that building, and then we have one at the end of the hall here, which would be Mr. Yoke and then myself, and then the school nurse are on this end of the building, so we pretty much have it.
Did our honor roll get published in the paper?
Damn, he sent it, I don't know if it got put in there or not, I haven't looked.
Okay, I don't know that I've seen it.
Okay.
In the paper, yeah.
And if she sent it, I'll contact her.
I'll see, yeah.
Okay, President's report, I didn't plan anything because I, I think we have to talk just... Move on to Superintendent's report.
Yeah, I don't have a, a whole lot of things there, I guess just a report team that sell those backboards for a hundred and fifty-five dollars, so forty dollars per one, and thirty-five, three of them are forty. I think we, I think we took, you know, bids there for about three basketball games, so they're gone, they're being used by, by little ones, you know, out there somewhere. I'll contact Building Grounds Committee probably tomorrow and see if we can lock down a date, would be good to start having some discussion about any, any thoughts for facility needs this summer or in the next few years, so we need to have that discussion and probably then report back to the board in February, and then, then possibly, hopefully, a decision in March on what we might need and who we might need to lock down for some summer work.
So, can I interrupt you a second? I know I mentioned this to you before, but we used to have the February meeting at noon, we would come in and eat, and then have our meeting at dinner, and then we used to always walk through all the facilities and look at things. I don't know if there's any interest in doing that again or, or not, it's kind of me and you guys, you don't have to do it by any means.
For the day thing?
Well, beyond that, second Monday, we can pick a different day, I suppose.
Well, if you do, you have to post it as a meeting. That'd be the tenth of February, unless, you know, e- e- even if it doesn't work to have a noon meeting, you should start the meeting early and go on tour, especially if the Building Grounds Committee wants the whole board to look at something, so I mean, if that...
Well, gives us a chance to, round a lot of you guys easier anyway, but, you know, support the cafeteria also, it's up to you guys, doesn't make me any...
Thank you very much.
You need to go ahead and everybody take a look here.
Right.
So do you want to plan on a meal there and then have it right after, walk through?
Sure.
On second Monday of the next month.
So then we wouldn't have a, like a meeting?
A what?
We wouldn't have a meeting, we just have a...
Yeah, we would have our meeting right after we ate, and then after the meeting we'd walk, well, maybe you'd want to walk through first if you're gonna have a discussion with the Building and Grounds about what they recommend, we may want to walk through first.
So how long do you think?
Well, yeah, you're gonna be on time for a little bit. That's about how much time you want to stand.
Let me, I can share with you what are some traditional February, what you can anticipate to be on the agenda, let's see if I can get right there. So, we can, we can forego a month of policy review if you can tear yourself away from that. School calendar, generally February.
It's just the first, we usually don't adopt it, we just kind of look it over.
Well, it, it, you could take action.
Yeah.
But, but yes, and, and, you know, I could, we, we haven't decided, we haven't really, we've got a draft of one, but sometimes you get an option A, option B, we can live with both, what do you, what do you, how do you feel, but, no, February's pretty, pretty slow.
We will have to put on your contract.
Yes, you, you, you'll have an action item for the calendar and for the terms of my contract.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that I can make.
Well, by the time we eat, you know, it might be...
I can make that.
Okay, you want twelve o'clock, high noon?
Does that work best for you, to be less owed an hour?
Yeah, eat at noon?
Eat at noon and then have our meeting, so we can eat, and then we'll walk through after that.
Yeah, that'll work.
And you can stay as long as you want. Eleven thirty.
Huh?
That way I can work till eleven thirty.
Okay.
That works good.
Noon at the elementary.
Turn in.
Just bring your appetite.
Make sure.
Okay, sorry, I interrupted you, go ahead.
Nope, that, I had that on my notes, so you just got ahead of me, that's fine.
Oh, okay.
That, so that, that's fine. But speaking of different meeting times, May, the May meeting, could we move that time to five thirty, because we'd like to have honors night that night at seven? So can our May?
May eleventh.
May eleventh meeting be at five thirty, which would probably give us plenty of time to be done by seven.
Does that work for you either? Do you have a problem?
Works for me? So we're at five thirty that day?
Yes, May.
I'm pretty sure it's something consistent in five hours.
Good. And then that's, that's all I have.
Good.
Did we have one more student transfer out this semester?
We did, this one here.
Okay.
Was contacted today ironically by a parent with two kids from the district that one moved to, to move in, so...
I just noticed it was down, so I just wondered.
You know, that, oh, did I have something on there about that?
Well, just, you just always have boy, girl.
Oh, the, yeah, yeah, boy, girl, so, you know, that's just, that's...
The way it goes.
Yeah.
Pretty good.
Okay, um, you want to read this one?